Call a meeting to order, turn it over to you Greg for all cough.
Okay Chairman Canfield.
Here.
Beecham.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Shrobin.
Here.
Good, we have a quorum.
All right, brings us to approval of the agenda. I would do have a little change in the agenda. Greg reviewed it with Dick Went and once we have interviewed the candidates, we cannot go into closed session to discuss it. So our discussion about the candidates will be open session in front of the camera.
Can we like say when that actually is going to be put up online then because we can't really put that online until we notify the candidate?
Not necessarily. It won't be online, it won't be online until we've talked to the candidate.
I mean that would just make it a little bit awkward.
Right.
They should hear from us.
Yes.
Yes.
Directly.
So we'll change that, just cross out the closed session section there on item four. And we're just gonna have a general manager interview discussion and then possible action resulting from discussion.
So with that change, not having the closed session, I would make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I will support.
We have a motion in support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Brings us to public comment for items not on the agenda. Hearing none, we will move on to our general manager discussion.
Let me start.
I'd just, I'd like to, open by saying, it says a lot about the reputation and the quality of the organization here when you look at the candidates that were interested in coming here. We had four excellent candidates, two internal and two outside and they were all very qualified. That says a lot about the great operation here that we have talent of this caliber that's interested in coming to work here.
I agree.
And with that, I'll turn it over to you Tamlin.
Cause y'all know like I took lots and lots of notes. Yes, I do agree with you Greg that we are very fortunate to have had four great candidates. But after the interviews, I think it really comes down to two people, in my opinion. I really think it's between Kelly and Steve. And I think that because their level of professionalism combined with their unique experiences, I think kind of put them at the, you know, at the cream of the crop there. So to me, I feel like it's down to those two in terms of, and that's gonna be a really, really tough choice between those two because I think they each bring some really unique things to the table. They have very, very different experiences and I'll be honest, if I look on paper, I would say Kelly absolutely rises above. But when you look at the interview and you look at the work experience, there's a lot of ways where Steve would be incredibly beneficial. So to me, those are the two. I don't know, I don't know if y'all agree that those are the top two, but that's where I'm at. And I'll leave it at that until everybody else.
Sure. Other comments from board members?
Well, they, to me, they were all impressive. And actually I was surprised that they all came out better than they looked on paper after talking to them, so that impressed me. And yeah, definitely my two, I'm kind of in the same boat you are that, you know, between Kelly and Steve, it'll be tough. They're both really good.
For different reasons.
Yeah, and I mean actually, and actually what was interesting is all four of the candidates had very different like styles. They would basically, they would each be a different type of leader, you know, if they were in that role and I guess you kind of expect that, different people, but I mean like categorically different, you know, so it's, I thought that actually worked out pretty well in that regard, but, but yeah, it became clear that the two of them were definitely the two that were the most ready and fit, I guess you could say.
Perry. I agree. I liked you, I was pleasantly surprised with Doug Barnes with the, with the, did not, with his academics, was not aware of all the academics that he has, his doctor in business administration. So again, had some very qualified credentials. Daniel Scott, I think his experience, I did like, again, some names, whether he threw out some names, Nylund and from the APPA and some different things that again showed me that he's aware of the American Public Power Association, which I'm a, again, were a member. Kind of the, what I, I guess, expected, the good old boy, I mean, just that southern drawl draws you right in, easy to talk to, easy to converse with. I liked, you know, what he talked about the board, you know, he takes a direction from the board. And then there was Kelly, I think certainly great credentials, has had many different positions and different things with the Board of Light and Power in Lansing, which is MPPA's largest customer, or large, excuse me, largest member, which Lowell Light Power is a member of that also. And then there was Steve and I personally can't say enough good things about Steve. And again, I don't know what, what the process is, whether we're narrowing it down to two people and, and then doing more interviews or narrowing it down. I mean, I, I guess I'd like an idea on what the board is, the rest of the board members are thinking about in this process. Cause I had, and I've heard from, I think, I, and I've said this before in our other meetings, I'm a strong supporter and leaning towards Steve. I think you have a known of what you're, what you're getting. I think that with Kelly, again, great credentials and everything, but you have a little bit of an unknown, not knowing, not working with her and being, you know, a new candidate. I will tell you that in conversations with, and this was unsolicited, conversations with a couple of employees, one of their comments were, they liked working for Lowell Light Power. Since this change, since Ryan's come aboard and everything, they can't wait, wakes up, just can't wait to get to work. Again, and I think with our employees, I think that, that says a lot. I also like the idea of how Steve would, when we talked about employees, what, I asked the candidates about, especially our two candidates that were onboard candidates, what, what would they do different? Do you think their, our staffing is good, et cetera? And again, Steve talked about what his plan would be if he was the general manager and I liked that plan. I liked promoting within, I liked the idea of then he would then promote more responsibility to Julie and Megan. And I think we have great employees and I think that's another way of rewarding those employees. So just the whole, obviously from where I'm talking, you can see where I'm, you know, where my vote is and I think that was probably nothing new to most of you from beforehand. So anyway, I don't know what the.
All right. I agree with the earlier comment that they were much more impressive in person. Steve, we knew, but Doug Barnes, what a surprise, you know, such a humble, modest guy that is so talented and so well educated and just, you know, he kind of broad enough to show what he needed to for each level, but very impressive.
So he should call him doctor from that.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think that's his style. I think we'll just leave that with the resume, but that was impressive. I agree that two candidates kind of did rise to the top. Kelly was very impressive talking to her. Lot of experience, much larger municipal electric company. Everybody was from larger places than us pretty much, but I have no doubt, I think she would be capable. I'm with Perry, I think Steve is the best candidate for the job. We know what we get with him and as a person that has hired people for my business, sometimes people interview better than they perform. And with Steve, we know what we're getting, sometimes people that can interview really well, you can have some conflicts, internal things that the road isn't as smooth as it could be. Dan Scott was very impressive, I think we should get him to apply for city manager, like you say with that southern, and just what a gentleman, what a, what a great guy.
So good.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, they both have potential for city manager, but in filling our position, it's close, Kelly is a very close second to Steve. I still, I think he has such a bright future here and the way the employees like working underneath him, there's, just you hear nothing but positive comments. And we know what we're getting there and, you know, I liked what he talked about, his dad's history of staying at Zeeland and his dad's comment that you have to stay somewhere 20 to 25 years to make a difference in a place and his intent to do that. You know, we have a great community and great schools, he'll have kids, I would imagine at some point and I could see him as a long-term asset to the company, so.
And to the city.
Yep. And it, it's a tough decision because Kelly was very, very good. There's some areas that she outshines Steve, but when I look at the whole package and knowing what we have with Steve, Steve would get my vote.
I'll tell you, Dan Scott, what a breath of fresh air. When I watched that video, I thought, oh my gosh. And I was going to bring that to the table to ask him to apply for city manager because what's, just gangbusters, you know. Doug Barnes, I was, I have to be honest, I didn't have an audio with that. So I, I have to go by what, what I know and for him to have a doctorate, that's, that's huge, nobody, nobody has doctorates, you know. So that's wow, that we have him in-house, that's amazing. Now Kelly, gangbusters, what she, she just amazed me, I was just in awe. With everything that she's accomplished, everything, all her steps that she's gone through in her career, I just, I looked at her and what saddened me, I'll have to be honest with you about Kelly, is that I personally feel that she got to Lowell Light Power, she would instantly just be bored. I, I looked at her and I thought, you know, what, what else, what could happen for her? You know, what would really excite her? Lowell Light Power is a smaller entity than Board of Water and Light that she, you know, that she comes from. My vote is for Steve because of the fact that he is, and I'm all for looking at everybody that's on the table. Steve brings to the table the norm that I know him to be. He's not, he doesn't crumble under pressure and, and I've asked him some, some important questions, you know, in the past, why is this, why is that? And I put him on the spot and he just, he's very calming to me. And he answered and he stood by what he said and I, I look at him and I see a future and that's what I would like to have, is somebody that's going to take this job and they're gonna be part of the community, he's gonna walk down the street and I, and people say, you know, look at that, you know, young man there and his beautiful wife and that's, that's our Lowell Light Power, that's a face of our entity. And I would be just beaming that their kids go to our schools and become basketball players because he says they're probably not gonna make it for football, but you know, cause they're long and lean, but I just, I'm excited. My vote is for Steve, so there you got it.
I mean, just three votes for Steve, so. I, I think Steve is a very strong candidate. I appreciated the distinction that he made between management and leadership when I asked him about his leadership style. I think that shows some wisdom on his part. He's hungry, I mean, he's a go-getter, he's, he wants it, he wants it badly and that was really, really obvious. I am curious Greg, did any of the candidates send a thank you, appreciate the opportunity for interview because we all did, I mean, of course Steve had the advantage of having all of our email addresses. We all did get a thank you note for the opportunity and having gone through the interview and all of that. So I am curious if anybody else sent a note to you because you were their primary contact. So, so that, you know, to me, that's like interviewing 101, you always send a thank you note, right?
Bonus points there, huh?
It's interviewing 101, you do that. I appreciated the fact that he walked in the door, I mean, the professional presentation went there, all of it. My concerns, I think Steve is a great guy. When I look at the level of experience, there is no doubt that this man has the business sense that this organization needs. Economically, the guy gets it on a really high level. My concern about him is his lack of experience when it comes to negotiating agreements, when it comes to overall management. I mean, he just doesn't have a lot of experience in meeting people and I do have some concerns about that. When I look at the project management skill and experience that Kelly has, it's huge, it's huge and she gets this industry and she understands the business side and she has a lot of that experience. I've actually been thinking a lot about it since Tuesday, you know, and in my mind, there's, they're very equal for very, very different reasons. When I look at Kelly, I think we'd probably be lucky if she stayed five years. When I look at Steve, I could see him staying here for 25 years, which could be a really good thing, but maybe not a really good thing, you know? So I've also kind of, I mean, I know that shouldn't be the make or break consideration, but I've been thinking about that. There was a lot about Steve that I really, really appreciated, but there is, I have some concerns about the level of maturity in dealing when things get really hard. And I haven't seen Steve in a hard situation, so I don't know, I can't, I mean, I haven't seen any of these guys in a hard situation, so I don't know. But I appreciated the story that he told about the conflict resolution that he had taken care of and, and I will be honest, I think if Steve is in this role, I think it would be very, very important for the board to do two things. I appreciate that he wants to maintain that high-level controller role and I know he's a young guy and I know he's hungry, but I worry that he will get burned out. I worry that he won't check enough of himself to kind of say, wait a minute, that, you know, you're working way too much, you need to back off. So I would be very, very concerned about that and I would encourage, because my time on this board will be done at the end of this week, but I would encourage the board to be thoughtful and mindful of that and pay attention to that. Because when you have someone that is such a go-getter and just that, you know, he's, he wants to prove himself and he's worked very, very hard to prove himself and I applaud that, but on the other hand, I also know, long-term, that is not sustainable. And to have the wisdom to understand that that's not sustainable, I'm not sure he has that wisdom and I'm very concerned about that. So I would say if he is the choice, I think the board really has to pay attention to that. Whether that's doing some executive coaching for him down the road, whatever that is, I think that's gonna be very, very important for his development. Cause otherwise, if he, if he gets fried, that can do so much damage to this organization. I've watched, it happened way too many times with CEOs. So that is one really big concern. The other concern that I have, and again, this is maybe a, I may be making an assumption, he knows the business side of this industry incredibly well. And I'm not saying he necessarily has to be linemen on up like Dan was, I mean, that's great, Dan knows the whole system, because that's why you have a good staff around you, to know those things. But I don't know what his, because we didn't get into the technical aspects at the interview, so I don't know what his understanding is of all of that aspect of the industry. And so part of me says, he doesn't really have to know it. I mean, in some regards, Kelly doesn't know that either. It's about making sure you have good people here to take care of those things and, you know, we do have a great staff and that's, that's why you hire a good staff. But that was my other kind of, but then I look, you know, I think back and I was looking at my notes from Kelly and I'm not a hun, I think she has more understanding of the technical aspect of the industry than what Steve does, probably because she's been in it so much longer. So yeah. So that's kind of where I'm at. When I look at Kelly, she's got the business acumen, she has the technical knowledge, obviously not to the level that someone like Dan did, but I think she brings a great deal of energy, all of those types of things. Her vision for where Lowell Light and Power would go might be slightly different than what we've set, but I don't know how much she would adapt to that vision that's been set or how much she would try to set her own. Whereas Steve, obviously because he's here, he's internal, he's gonna run with the vision that's already been set. And I, I think he may make some changes and some tweaks and see some things differently, but I can't see him really pushing to do anything drastically different than the course that's already been set, whereas Kelly may, just based on some of the conversation. So I don't know. So that's kind of where I'm at with the two of them. And I do, I feel like it's, they're both great for very different reasons, so to me, they're sort of equal in my head right now and I'm just not 100% sold. And I think my reservations about Steve are really more the leadership management aspect and I, and I just wonder if he has the maturity to recognize when he's doing too much. And I know that sounds like a really stupid thing because you think, no, you want your leader to do too much, but I've watched it happen in way too many organizations and it becomes an incredibly negative thing. So I have concerns about that.
I would agree, I think he really was working hard to show us what he could do. For the past three months, he has burned the candle at both ends, but I think he, you know, had his eye on the prize and I would expect him to back off if, if he does end up being the candidate that we select, so.
See, and I don't know that he would, I really don't. And that's what concerns me.
And if it goes south, Perry and I have experience at putting GMs out of business. We've done it 10 years ago.
Well, but my thing is. My thing is this board would have to pay attention to that because I think part of our job is to make sure that our GM stays healthy and happy. So I think that's part of our job.
But I think it's also easier to rein in somebody who's extra motivated than to push somebody who's not motivated.
Who's not motivated, absolutely. I mean, I think Kelly would be incredibly motivated, I think they've both got a high level of motivation.
Yeah, but I think as a board, that's one thing that our job as kind of policymakers, so to speak, is very good at, is sort of channeling their energy to certain directions and making sure that they're focused on the priorities we set and then letting them run as hard as they want to in those channels. And so as long as we provide good direction, I think, I think it'll be okay. It's, like I said, it's much better than trying to set policy for somebody who's not, doesn't really want to run with it. And I don't think we'd have a problem with any of these candidates really in that regard, but, but I think it's a better problem to have than to have the other problem. I guess, I guess since I, just for the record, I guess I'd have thought at least get a summary of each of the four that I kind of saw, just to kind of go through my thought process. Obviously I spent the past couple nights, you know, thinking about this quite a bit. And we'll start with Doug and I think he impressed me the most relative to what I was expecting of all the other, of all the four. I mean, and I was kind of new to being for a bit of a surprise, just knowing that, you know, looking at the resume, but then I was surprised at how well he seems to really like get it philosophically in terms of how to lead and what to do and those kind of things. I wish he could have articulated it a little better and I think so some of the, I think that just comes from just, he hasn't had as much direct experience in that regard. You know, he definitely gets it, you know, but he just, in terms of, especially there are times when, I forget about Perry, or somebody was asking for specific examples and sometimes he struggled with the, with some of those, but, but he had some really great insights and I loved the part that I think was his accomplishment being the termites because, or the termites, the turban because he said, it shows I can do it, you know, and it seems to be kind of like the theme in his whole career is that, you know, he's kind of looking for someone to throw him a challenge that he'll go accomplish. Well, in that same token, I kind of wish he'd been a little more, taken a little more initiative, you know, and saying, hey, I've got all this background, Light and Power, can you use me more than just as what I'm doing? And he didn't want to toot his own horn, but you know, that's also maybe part of the fun, I think, in that regard is kind of sometimes getting thrown something that he has to then tackle and turn into, being thrown an Olympic coal and turning it into a diamond kind of thing. Another great line I liked is how many talked about dealing with the troublesome folks then when he was a chief of security and saying how they, all they wanted to be, was to be recognized, just treat them like people and I think that's sometimes it's often forgotten and I know that's been, even where I work now, that's been kind of a major thrust, is making sure you remember to recognize people when they do something well. It's easy to kind of say, great, you did your job, but just because you did your job doesn't mean you shouldn't get recognized for it, you know? And if you're gonna do your job well, get some recognition, you know, even if we kind of expect it. So I was very impressed with him, so I'm hoping he can stick around, you know, the Light and Power, cause I mean, he's, he's awesome. Then, who's this one here? This is Dan. Dan actually was very, in many ways, he was much what I was expecting when I saw it on paper and, you know, and all that, he kind of, I mean, even just his, how he, how he looked and how he carried himself and all that, it was just exactly what I expected, you know, which is kind of weird. But he was definitely tons of experience and I was really impressed at his like interpersonal communication skills and aspects of that. He just really seems to get about how to solve people problems, seems to be his thing. You know, he talked about how he likes to solve problems, but I think he seemed to really just like the people problems more than the technical ones. And had very good organizational sort of intuition, I guess you could say. And he's definitely the connector type of person versus like the builder type.
My favorite line of him, his was fix the individual, don't regulate everybody for a few bad habits.
Yeah, well, I found that interesting because that seemed to contrast a bit with, I think something Kelly had said about, you know, being consistent and, you know, don't set precedents when, you know, just to deal with a specific, specific problem. So it was an interesting contrast, because he said that, I liked when he said that and after a while I was thinking about it, I thought, well, you have to be careful there, you know? But the other thing I thought was interesting is he did tons of research on Lowell and I liked when he talked about watching the videos and he was inspired by the unhappy citizens.
Yeah.
He said, because I love to deal with them. He's like, that's what he likes to do. So that just shows, I think, what really motivates him. You know, I think, you know, if he were available at the time, we were looking for, you know, what eventually became Greg, you know, he's the kind of guy we wanted, wanted, or someone like that who is, can be kind of like the fix a bad situation. You know, but since we have a good situation, there's not as much for him to fix. Now, he did mention, you know, someone asked him, you know, I think Perry said, how do you deal with such a small place? And it's like, oh, I'd find something. You know, and so, well, he's definitely motivated, you know. But yeah, he was, yeah, he was impressive. And then Kelly, yeah, also, her knowledge is just super impressive. You know, she seems to be a pretty quick study at a lot of the stuff and actually, I felt she has really good, I mean, obviously with her engineering background, she seemed to have, I think, greater technical knowledge than, you mentioned Dan, you thought Dan might have had more. I mean, he might have had more hands-on knowledge, but she seemed to have maybe a little more technical industry knowledge than he did. But again, it's hard to say, you know, just one interview. with her, I guess the one negative that came out is that several times she said, well, I don't know that much about Lowell, or I didn't, you know, research much. You know, when she said that once, I thought, well, I can understand that you're being modest or something. But when she kept saying, it's like, shouldn't you maybe have researched a bit, you know? And I kind of get the impression with her that she's someone that could go anywhere. I mean, she's, you know, I can kind of see why she's doing what she's doing. I kind of feel like, you know, she's definitely a very high-powered individual. But I also kind of got the impression that Lowell is one of many opportunities that she's looking at or could be.
Potentially a stepping stone.
Yeah, and as much as she would like being here, I think she would be just as happy in lots of other situations. And comparing to, I think this is kind of like Steve's dream job, so to speak. This is the one he wants. He'd definitely love being in other places too, but I think knowing that this is the one thing you want, it's going to, it's going to help. And she didn't really give that in the sense that she didn't say, hey, Lowell looks like a perfect fit or anything. It's like, here's my opportunity. I did like the mental she made about, one of the lessons she learned was, don't get comfortable. In terms of her disappointment about not being in the, you know, role where she feels she could be by now. And that's a good lesson even for us as a board, you know, to not get comfortable, even with how well Light and Power is doing. You know, and that's a good thing to be aware of. Not everyone's always aware of that. Especially as we talked about, you know, when you talk about maybe Steve, it'd be great if he stayed, if he were here, as the GM for like 20 some years, it's like, well, but don't want to get in the sudden, maybe that's not the good thing. And it's that reason you don't want to get comfortable.
Well, I totally could see him doing that. I mean, just the way he talked about his dad being in the same community for so long. He values that. There's a value to that for him, and I totally could see him doing that.
Yep.
Which could be a really cool thing.
Yeah, and that was one thing that did impress me about Steve was that comment about if you want to make a real change and have a real impact, or however you put it, prepare to spend like 20 or 25 years at it. That's a pretty good perspective to have for somebody who's barely that old, you know. You know, I mean, I don't know how old he is exactly, but I mean, if he's seven years out of college, he can't be, you know, that old. And so it's, you know, he's basically saying that, hey, if I want to do something, I better spend my entire lifetime at it. And, you know, it's easy to say if you've already done that, you know, if you're in your 60s or whatever, but.
The role effects of our parents.
Yeah.
I mean, his comment that his father, in 35 years, has not missed a council meeting or a board meeting. But he schedules his vacations around those.
Yeah. I mean, that is impressive, I mean.
But he said he intends to do as well.
Yeah. And Steve actually, even though we know him, he actually really impressed me with his interview. I mean, he showed a lot of like individuality I haven't seen as much before. You know, and I think it shows that he has been trying to kind of hone his own style or leadership character, whatever, you know, in the last 13 weeks that he's been in that role, even before then, you know, to some extent. And he's, he was big on the numbers, of course, being the accountant and all that. But I liked some of his attitude of, and this is actually something that he and Kelly both had in common, was the numbers will also show you the right decision. I think they both made similar statements with that. They said, you know, just get the study done, get the information out there, and when you have all the information together, the answer is obvious. Or at least it helps you get to the right answer, because it kind of limits all the wrong answers that people would try to take if you didn't have that information. And yeah, he showed a lot of, I think, maturity, like you said about his, he's put a lot of thought into like leadership style, or the difference between that and management style. Just the notion that he's being proud of the fact that the clean audit took two or three years of work. So it wasn't a quick thing and, you know. So he showed, I think, some maturity in some of the answers he gave. And I think he was also the only candidate that actually asked us questions and had questions ready to ask us. Which I was surprised, especially with the other candidates having so much more experience, you know, overall, just in their careers. And I thought for sure we were going to get some questions from, you know, Kelly or Dan in particular, being not from the area that they would, but that was a little disappointing, actually. But.
The other interview 101, you always ask questions in the interview.
Yeah, there was something else I was going to say about Steve and then, oh, and then you mentioned about his technical capability or concerns and I wouldn't be as concerned about that. I mean, you have engineers and, you know, linemen and other folks who have that technical background to rely on. What's important, I think, is that he does have a very analytical, strategic thought process. And so, and then especially just having sat with him through explanations and spreadsheets and things like that. You know, he definitely, you know, he definitely has the mind that could be an engineer if he wanted to be. And so I think as long as he enjoys what he's doing, he will learn what he needs to learn to do this kind of thing. And yeah, the other comment was just the fact that, yes, that that is a very good comment you made about the fact that he needs, he showed that he isn't quite mature enough yet to recognize when he's doing too much. Which is a common thing of youth, you know, we always complain about, you know, kids are always trying to do too much. That reminds me of ultra-runners, I'm a fan of running, obviously. And there's a really young ultra-runner who's doing really well, but on the scene, he was very big on training, 200 miles a week, things like that, which is twice as much as a lot of people will train. And people said, you're crazy. He's like, no, I'm not crazy. You're all crazy. And well, two years later, he had stress fractures. And he's had problems since. And I just remember thinking, the guy was just, it showed he was immature about his youth and what it's useful allowing him to do for a short term. He didn't realize he couldn't do that forever. But given our position, our role in the council or the board, I think that's something that we'll be able to rein in. And just let him know, yes, I know you can do it. We're telling you, please don't do it. Because we'd rather you do other things. And I think he'll recognize that and even if he maybe is, it's kind of like, oh, I could do it. I really could. You don't have to do that. And I think, and if you, it wouldn't take him long to kind of recognize the gains he could get from it. I know that's one thing that I've seen for Greg and even city managers when I was in council is the one thing they all could have used a lot more of was just some time. You know, there are certain things that just, they had to deal with, especially like when the union thing happened. It took a lot of yours and Mark's time, but I just remember thinking, there are so many more cool things that could have been going on if those two guys had, you know, those hours per week back from having to deal with that. And I think he'll start getting that once he realizes, if we tell him, please, focus less on this, more on this, and he'll get it, I think. But yeah, that was, I guess, my impression of them and they, I was glad that the two, the two internal ones had some of the, impressed me some of the most relative to the other candidates, relative to their resumes. Well, Kelly was also very impressive, much more than her resume showed as well. So I guess where I'm at is, I would really be happy with either Steve or Kelly, you know. Kind of rooting for Steve in the sense that I'm, you know, a fan of his and that kind of thing. I'm just, it's hard for me personally to kind of just not flat out say Steve without trying to be my own devil's advocate. You know, I want to, I want to make sure I'm not being unfairly biased and and kind of giving him something that he may not have earned or deserved, even though I feel like he has.
Well, the internal candidates that do well do have a, I mean, there's a little bit of an advantage there when you walk into an interview and it's your home turf. But yeah, it's important to not.
What you're talking about in Tampa, I've talked to him. I think he already does recognize what you're talking about, because his comment is, I've been doing this for 13 weeks. I've been doing both jobs. And I've been able to do both jobs. But what he's recognizing is that that he can do the general manager's position and just the higher-end things of what he's currently doing and all the day-to-day minutia, different stuff that his plans are already to, to, I mean, he's already, for me, he's already, he's already seen that picture. Okay, I'm going to, I hope to be the general manager and I'm going to still like work on the budget and some different things. But the some, the day-to-day things that I'm currently doing, I'm going to delegate those to Julie and Megan. And I'm going to look at hiring another office staff to relieve some of their day-to-day things that then they can, you know, again, moving up. And again, I just, I like that. And I, again, I'm with Kelly. I'm probably sticking my, in a big lawsuit or whatever, but what I like is Steve's in the community. He's not, he's not officially in, he's 15 minutes. He lives out on Virgin's. He's actually in Ada Township, looking to move in here. Again, Kelly wouldn't commit on that, but committed that they'd have to look at the financing. Her husband works in Lansing. Her daughter is a student in Lansing and everything. And, you know, for me, that I weigh highly is somebody being here in the community. And again, that's.
And I don't think Kelly ruled that out.
I don't think she did rule it out, but she didn't go, yes, I mean.
Well, but she did talk about the fact that she understood the value of being engaged in the community. So whether or not she moves here right away, she really did address the fact that there's value in being engaged in the community and that that that's important to her. So to me, that's, that's, I mean, I get what you're saying, but that's not a factor.
Right. She left that door open.
It shouldn't be a factor. The, you know, and I'm not saying, you know, the concerns I raise about Steve, I'm not saying Steve can't overcome those. I have tremendous respect for the man. I have really enjoyed working with him over the last several years and, I mean, he is brilliant. Yes, he has an incredibly analytical mind. But there are things that I think we have to be aware of. I think we have to be thoughtful of. You know, the other thing that, I loved how he talked about his disappointment being his internship at Lowell Light and Power. But the other thing that he said that Dan also talked about, that I thought was really good and has been a conversation that you and I have had in the past, Greg, is that idea of economic development. And Steve and Dan both saw part of their role as being in that. But again, I just.
That was actually one.
Managing tough relationships. I don't know how Steve will manage really tough relationships, tough situations. That's my only concern.
But that's, yeah, that was one thing I noticed about both Dan and Steve. They both had that question about, you know, how can we help the greater community of Light and Power? I mean, they were both right on recognizing something. Actually, I think all four candidates eventually answered growth as kind of the biggest challenge and opportunity. But Steve and Dan both right off the bat kind of recognized as a community program, probably not a Light and Power problem. And even Kelly was more focused on how can we grow and expand and improve Light and Power, sort of just as a.
The technical aspect of expanding.
Yeah, or just kind of having Light and Power sort of be a solid point in the community as opposed to actually being a motivating force in the community. And I was impressed with Steve and, you know, getting that, and Dan, both of them, they both had, you know, awesome answers in that regard.
And I also really liked Steve's comments about PR and marketing and wanting to really look at engaging more with the city and the chamber. And I did like his hiring plan.
Yeah, that was really good too.
My cautions are there for what they're worth.
Greg, you're not a voting member of the board, but you sat in on three of the four interviews and some feedback from you.
Yeah, I was pleased with the way the interview process went. I tried to, as I did the phone interviews with the candidates, tried to discern which ones would bring some types of strengths to the table that maybe we hadn't had in the past or things that would show that they had abilities in areas that I think, that I thought were important. So I was glad that we got a good cross-section. And I think that came across in what we had. I was a little disappointed that a couple of them backed out at the last minute, because that would have given us even a more breadth of people to look at. But I think we did get a good cross-section. I think that, as you've all said, all the candidates have something to bring to the table that would be beneficial to Lowell Light and Power. You know, everybody has gifts and talents that are a little bit different. We don't all do things the same way. And that's a good thing. And I can see positives from each of those perspectives for each of the candidates. I, like other people said, I like the southern, laid-back perspective that Dan had in terms of his history and his experience and confidence in his ability to handle situations as they arose. And that's a good thing. I think that Kelly has a lot of that experience coming from a big utility, where they've done a lot of things that we haven't done and may never have to do, but at least brings that experience to the table. So I think you've all captured it all. Steve, you know, is someone that I tried to help bring to this point. So I'm glad that he's been able to do that and I have a lot of confidence in Steve. One of the discussions that Steve and I have had along the way, and I think he recognizes the value in it, and I wouldn't put it past him, actually, at some point in time. As smart and as intelligent as he is, he also recognizes that he doesn't know everything. And is willing to further his education, if necessary. To get an MBA or to go to engineering school or to take classes in areas that he knows he would be better off if he had more strength in those areas. So I think that.
Because I thought he'd just finished an MBA.
No.
I thought he was working on his MBA.
No.
Okay, so what was he working on? Because a couple of months ago.
He's getting his, he's getting his certificate as a utility manager from APPA. That's what he's finishing up. And that, that's what the Smart Grid project is. It's his.
That's right. That's his project.
That's his project for that certification from APPA is getting his utility manager certification. So that was something that we decided, you know, two or three years ago, would be in his best interest to accomplish that first. So I think with your direction and assistance in helping keep him focused, that he has the ability and desire to go wherever you need him to go. And I think that has a lot. And I think that has a lot more potential than people who maybe have a lot of their ducks already in a row, and know how they would do things and want to do it, and so on and so forth. So...
He's moldable, is that what you're saying?
He's moldable. He's moldable.
There is value in that.
There is, there is. Steve has one of the, one of the characteristics that I think is most important in an employee is he has a teachable spirit.
Yeah, I agree with you, that is probably the highest on the list.
And I, that's one of the reasons we've gone so far in such a short period of time.
Well, I would make a motion to go into negotiations to hire Steve Dockersley as the general manager.
Without support?
Okay. I'd like to do a roll call vote on this, if you would, Greg. Okay, let me just get my notes here. All right. Jeremy Canefield?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Coldwater?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Schramman?
Yes.
We have a unanimous.
And my under, my next is, we need, talking to Dick Wemp, we can't have a quorum to negotiate itself, but I would like a couple of the board members, along with Greg, to negotiate that. I think, I think it's important that a board, one or two board members be included in that.
I agree.
Yes, I do think it's important for board members to be included in that. I don't know if it's most appropriate to have our chairperson there, so I think it's a good idea for Greg Canefield and, and one of you guys, you want to do that? You want to negotiate?
I would like, I would like to be a part of that.
I mean, I, I think that you guys are obviously the most senior members of the board, you have the most history. I think it makes sense for you to be engaged in that conversation. So, I just ask that you all take care of Roy, okay? I don't want to come back in three years and find out that you fried him and he's...
He locked himself in the room and won't come out.
Why? Just take care of him, so if he decides to accept the position, which I can't imagine him not doing it, but just be thoughtful about that.
I would, any other business? I would move to adjourn.
All support?
A motion in support to adjourn. Alloes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is over.
Thank you.
I lost my last official duty as a board.